Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June 14th, 2022 Borough Council meeting. Happy Pride Month and happy Flag Day. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually using the Zoom webinar platform. We're glad you have joined us here for this meeting, both in person and virtually. Participants who are attending tonight's meeting both may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearings portions of the agenda. During those times, community members joining us via Zoom, please raise your hand and our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to address council. We will start with members of the public who are in council chambers and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. During due to the breadth of tonight's agenda, we do ask that participants keep their comments to under three minutes if possible. Thank you again, and we will now begin our meeting with a pledge allegiance and moment of silence. And with that, we'll start with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Ms. Cermanito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mayor Urschler.
Here.
Manager here, assistants here, chiefs here, solicitors here, you have a core.
Thank you very much. Just one note for the record, Ms. Dugan is excused absent, she was unable to join us tonight. With that, that brings us to section three of tonight's agenda with our presentations. It is our annual audit as presented by Maley LLP. And with that, we'll hand it over to Dale.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dale Umbit Hauer. I'm the manager on the Borough's annual audit. I'm going to share my screen now. Someone tell me if you can see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, so the first thing we have here is the opinion. And something that you may notice from difference from the prior year is that we now have the opinion in the very first paragraph. Previously, it was at the top of page two. And we had some new auditing standards that we implemented in the current year. And one of those said that we needed to move the opinion so that that was the first thing the reader would see. So first thing we see here is that we have audited the financial statements and that in our opinion, they are fairly presented in all material respects. This lists the basis for our opinion, and then it goes into the responsibilities of management for the financial statements. And it says here that the Borough's management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Then on page two, it talks about our responsibilities with the financial statements. And one of the things that we are noting at the bottom here is that we are required to communicate those charged with governance if we have any internal or related matters that we identified during the audit. We did not identify any internal control matters during the audit, so there's nothing to report there. This is just some required information on the required supplementary information, the supplementary information that I'll go over here in a few minutes. The first thing we're going to look at, first statement is the statement of net position. This is the government-wide statement of net position. So this is more like a for-profit business where we include all of the capital assets, all of the debt, all the pension and OPEB information, and their related deferred inflows and outflows. Governmental activities section is the governmental funds, and then the business-type activities section is the business-type activities, which is the water, sewer, parking, et cetera. So for the governmental activities, we had total assets of $59.9 million, of which 17.7 million of that was cash and cash equivalents. Something this year, we have $5.2 million for a net pension asset. And I'll go through the roll forward for you later to see how the pension asset has grown. Business-type activities, we have total assets of right around 50 million. There are some deferred outflows of resources related to the pensions and OPEB. And then down here is our liability section. So in the governmental activities, we had total liabilities of 27.8 million. In the business-type activities, we had total liabilities of 6.6 million. Some deferred inflows of resources related to pension and OPEB. That leaves us with our net position. So we had net position invested in capital assets of 18.3 million on the governmental side and 29 million on the business-type activity side. We had some restricted net position of 4.9 million. And then we had unrestricted net position of 7 million for the governmental activities and 16.4 million for the business-type activities. This is the statement of activities. So this is the basically the income statement for the government-wide. This again is broken down between governmental activities and business-type activities. We had total expenses on the governmental activity side of 11.3 million. On the business-type activity side, we had total expenses of 8.2 million. Our program revenues were 1.9 million in charges for services, 758,000 for operating grants and contributions, and then 438,000 for capital grants and contributions. And then down here, the program revenues for the business-type activities were 11.6 million, 77,000 of operating grants and contributions, and then 544,000 of capital grants and contributions. Now, I apologize for the presentation of this schedule because it's actually kind of a book view, so the next page here is the rest of it. And the important thing to note here, this is the general revenues, so this is all of the taxes, season fines, grants and contributions that are not restricted. And then we had investment earnings, gain on sale of assets, and some transfers between the two. So we had total general revenues of 11.8 million on the governmental side. And then we had a negative 304,344 on the business-type activity side. And you see here that that's due to the transfer from the business-type activities to the governmental activities. The next schedule is our governmental funds balance sheet. And what you'll notice here is that there is no capital assets and there's no debt on this one, there's no pension information because this is focused on current resources. So for the general fund, we had total assets of 15.7 million, total liabilities of about 2 million. We had some unavailable revenues of property taxes that had not been received of 145,000. And then we had our total fund balance of 13.6 million, of which about 900,000 was unassigned. And the other governmental funds, we had total assets of 2.6 million, total liabilities of 104,000, and total fund balances of about 2.5 million. This schedule, the reconciliation from the governmental activities to the governmental fund balances. So it's basically a reconciliation between the government-wide and the statement that we just looked at. And what we do is we take the fund balance from the statement we just looked at, we add back all the capital assets, we add back grant receivable pension assets, and then we back up the deferred inflows and outflows and all the debt and premiums associated with that net position of governmental activities that we looked on the first schedule. The next schedule is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the governmental funds. So here we have the general fund, total revenues of about 11.3 million, total expenditures of 21 million. That leaves us with a deficiency of revenues over expenditures of 9.8 million. We had total other financing sources of a transfer out of 710,000. That leaves us with a net change in fund balance of a negative $10.5 million for the year. You'll see that that leaves us with the ending balance of 13.6 million. But I want to point out here that this is not a typical operations year for the borough. We had significant amounts of capital outlay for the firehouse and the culture rec center. So that's why the expenditures were so high in the current year. Other governmental funds, we had total revenues of 3.3 million, total expenditures of 4 million, a deficiency of revenues over expenditures of 772,000. We had some transfers in and transfers out, which leaves us a total other financing sources of about $1 million. That gives us a net change in fund balance of 289,501 for the year. The next schedule is the reconciliation to get from the schedule we just looked at to the income statement for the government-wide. So we start with our net change in fund balances, which was the negative 2.2 million. Here's our capital outlays of 11.9 million. And then we have some other things flowing through here, the amortization of bond premiums, the repayment of bond principal. This is the deferred tax revenues. This is accrued interest on the long-term debt. And these are the changes in our open pension and compensated absences. And that takes us to our positive net change of 3.5 million on the government-wide. The next schedule, I'll make it a little bigger so it's easier to see, is the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. So the total will agree to the first schedule that we looked at, but it's broken down now by water, sewer, parking, and sanitation. So we had total current assets of 9.3 million for the water fund, total capital assets of 15.4 million, gives us total assets of 24.7 million. We had some deferred outflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of 207, which gives us a total assets and deferred outflows of resources of 24.9 million. On the sewer fund, total current assets of 7.9 million, total capital assets of 16.6 million, total deferred outflows of resources of 93,000, gives us a total assets and deferred outflows of resources of 24.6 million. The parking fund, current assets of about a million, total capital assets of 556,000, and then some deferred outflows related to the pensions and OPEB of 26,000, gives us total assets and deferred outflows of resources of 1.6 million. The sanitation fund, we had total current assets of 2.1 million, total capital assets of about a million, total deferred outflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of 118,000, leaving us with total assets and deferred outflows of resources of $3.2 million. The next page is the liability section of the schedule. So for the water fund, we had total current liabilities of 309,000, total non-current liabilities of 1.1 million, and that's some deferred inflows related to the pensions and OPEB of 202,000. So that leaves us with our total net position of $23.3 million. The sewer fund, total current liabilities, 3.4 million, total non-current liabilities, 3.3 million, total deferred inflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of 89,000, leaving us net position of 17.9 million. Parking fund, total current liabilities, 10,187, non-current liabilities, 36,572, some deferred inflows of resources of 26,000, leaving us with total net position of 1.5 million. The sanitation fund, we had current liabilities of 94,000, non-current liabilities of 196,000, deferred inflows of resources related to pensions and OPEB of 116,000, leaving us with net position of 2.8 million for the sanitation fund. The next schedule is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for the proprietary funds. So we had operating revenues, water fund of 4.9 million, operating expenses of 3.8 million, giving us operating income of $1.2 million. We had some non-operating revenues and expenses totaling a negative 17, and then some transfers of 351,403, leaving us a net change in net position of 842,000 for the year. The sewer fund, we had total operating revenues of 4.7 million, total operating expenses of about 2 million. And then we had some non-operating revenues and expenses on the expense side of 103,000, no transfers for a total change in net position of 2.6 million. The parking fund, operating revenues of 525,000, operating expenses of 461,000, little bit of interest and investment revenue of $49, giving us a change in net position for the year of about 114,000. The sanitation fund, operating revenues of about 2 million, operating expenses of 1.9 million, interest and investment revenue of 14,907, giving us a positive change in net position for the year of 152,000. The next schedule is the statement of cash flows for the proprietary funds. It just shows the ins and outs of cash for the year. I'm not going to go through that. The next schedule here is our statement of fiduciary net position. So this is our fiduciary funds, which is comprised of our custodial funds, which we hold in a custodial capacity for others, and then the pension funds. So the pension funds had total assets of $37.1 million and a total net position of $37.1 million with no liabilities. The custodial funds had total assets of 651,000, total net position of 651,000. The next page is the statement of changes in fiduciary net position. So for the pension funds, we had total contributions of 1.2 million, total investment earnings of 4.4 million. That gives us total additions of 5.5 million for the year. We had deductions, which are related to benefits and administrative payments of 1,057,000, giving us a positive change for the year of $4.5 million. The custodial funds, we had contributions from developers of 2.6 million. We had escrow payments back out of 2.7 million, giving us a change in net position for the year of negative 158,338. Next schedule I'm going to go over is the statement of the capital assets footnote. It shows the increases and increases in capital assets for the year. I'll make it a little bigger so you could see it in this here. So we had construction in progress increases of 11,825,424, all related to the firehouse and the community center. We had other capital asset additions of 1,059.25. And then we had accumulated depreciation expense for the year of 975,385. We had some decreases of vehicles and the related accumulated depreciation of those. And then on the business-type activities, we had construction in progress of 3.9 million. We had other capital assets being depreciated of 1.7 million, and then some fully depreciated vehicles again being disposed. The next footnote I'm going to show you is the long-term debt footnote. This shows the additions for the year. Only addition for the year was an increase in the OPEB liability of 592,355. And then we had our retirements of 699,318, leaving us with a final balance of 25,606,036, of which 720,000 is due within one year. The business-type activities, again, our only addition is some liability of 116,145. We had retirements of debt and compensated absences of 719,000, leaving us with a year-end balance of $5.3 million, of which about 720,000 is due within one year. Shows a breakdown of the interest expense for the year. The next footnote I'm going to go over is the police pension roll forward. This shows our beginning liability, which was actually an asset of 2.4 million. We had net changes of a positive 1.6 million. So this is the balance at the end of the year of an asset of 4,145,605. This may look a little funny because you're wondering how a negative number can be an asset, but keep in mind that these numbers, the liability numbers are negative numbers on the statement of government-wide. So you can see that our pension liability here is 16.8 million. Our fiduciary net position is almost 21 million, that gives us the asset of 4.1 million. The next schedule is the municipal pension roll forward. This is for the non-uniform plan. So we had a beginning pension asset of 1.5 million. We have an ending pension asset of 1.4 million. Our pension liability is 14.7 million for the non-uniform plan, and our total fiduciary net position for the non-uniform plan is 16.1 million. The next schedule is the OPEB roll forward. This shows the changes in the OPEB. So we had a beginning net liability of 2.9 million. We have an ending liability of 3.6 million, and that's due to the service costs, the interest costs, the changes of assumptions, and then some benefit payments out. One thing to notice here is that there's no statement of fiduciary net position because there's no money set aside for the OPEB plan, so it's strictly liability, broken down between the non-uniform and the police. The next schedule is the budget to actual for the general fund. Shows that we had a final budget revenues of 17 million dollars. The revenues came in at actually 11.3 million. That was a positive budget variance of about $500,000. The expenditures, we had full expenditures budgeted of 8.6 million. They came in at 21 million. That gives us a negative budget variance of $12.4 million, which, as I mentioned before, was related to the firehouse and the culture center. Transfers, we budgeted transfers out of 1,025,786. They came in at 1,061. We didn't budget for any transfers in, but we had transfers in of 351,403. These are the combining statements. If you remember, the first schedule that I went through for the governmental funds, there was just the general fund and then the other governmental funds. So these are what makes up all the other governmental funds. We have the fire fund, the liquid fuels fund, the debt service fund, recreation fund, and the pension fund. These totals here will tie back to the first schedule that we looked at. This is the combining schedule of the changes in fund balance for the other revenue funds. Again, we have the fire fund, the liquid fuels fund, the debt service fund, the recreation fund, and the pension fund. The next combining schedules we have are for the fiduciary net positions. So this breaks down the police pension fund from the non-uniform pension fund. So for the non-uniform pension fund, we had total assets of 16.1 million. And for the total, the police pension fund, we had total assets of about 21 million, all of which is restricted for pensions. The last page here breaks out the income statement for the pension funds between the non-uniform and the police. So the total additions on the non-uniform plan were 2.5 million. The total additions on the police pension plan were about 3 million. Total deductions for the non-uniform plan were 638,356. And for the police pension fund, 420,000, giving us positive change in net position of 1.9 million for the non-uniform and 2.6 million for the police. That concludes my presentation of the financial statements. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this point.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions from members of council? Just as one point, I do like to remind our viewing audience, this is a document that is sent to council ahead of time, so we did have a chance to review it in full beforehand. Any questions from council on the presentation from Maley? Okay, thank you, Dale.
You bet. And I appreciate you letting me go first. Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
All right, well, you have a great night.
You as well. Thank you.
All right, take care.
With that, we'll need a motion to accept the 2021 audit as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. As a reminder, this will be posted on our website as soon as staff is able to get that updated. So with that, we do have our first round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make comment? Please, if you're in the public here tonight, we will have you come up to the podium, you'll have, we'll have you state your name and your address. Please sign in on the sheet that is below the microphone. If you're joining us virtually, we ask that you raise your hand digitally, and we'll have our staff go through the list one by one and announce your name and unmute you as time progresses. So with that, we'll start with any members of the public here with us tonight in council chambers. Seeing none, we'll move right on to Zoom. Ms. Logan?
Dr. Sanic, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me there?
Yes, hello.
Okay, good, good evening. David Sanic. We're calling about, I imagine this is where to speak to it. This is Roman numeral five, E3, the complete streets edition. And why are we adopting? I don't know if it's a back and forth or just make my statements. My question would be, why are we adopting this? And does it apply to every part of the borough? Because the borough is vastly different, different areas. Are you going to, do we answer that? Or should I just throw all my questions out there now?
Mr. Sanic, this is just public comment right now, but you can certainly throw all of your questions out at this time.
Okay, well, those are the two. And also, it's like 20 pages long. I mean, that's a lot of more. I don't know what to put there, bureaucratic things to look into. The other thing is I would urge my two council people to vote no on this, not adopt this. That's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Sanic. Troy, have turned on your microphone.
Hi, Troy Gerter, Bander slice street. So during the meeting last month, there was a proposal made by the group building the mountain bike course at the reservoir park to take over the large dog park there. I noticed a few major problems with the proposal, and I suggest the updated plan be denied and these issues addressed. First, it was stated that there was 25,000 square feet of underused space in the current dog park. I do not think that's accurate. The dogs use the whole space as far as I've seen. It's engaging for them to explore the natural environment and run around the small trail that goes through the most dense area. Along with the shade provided, the natural feel of the park is a major part of its appeal and uniqueness. The dog, the dogs need shade even more than humans do. And with some thought and care, this space can be maintained to be both accessible and natural. Second is the parking issue. Now with the disc golf course bringing in so many people during the nice weekends and even some nicer weekdays, the parking has been packed. People have been parking on the grass at times. If the bike park is going to be as popular as they claim, this will be even more of a problem. When it was brought up in the last meeting, the presenter stated that the mountain bikers would be willing to park down at the Crombie Trailhead and ride to the bike park. I'm not sure if the trail actually connects to the reservoir park, but neither Crombly Road or Fillmore Street seem like a safe biking route for kids. On top of that, I'm wondering who would be making sure that the bikers were parking down there and not taking up all the space at the actual park. Finally, the proposed new large dog area has some major problems, including broken fences and lacking any shade. The bike park was approved over a year ago, and no progress was made on that space. It's hard to believe a new park, if fully approved, would be done in two months, as they suggested, and that it would be properly cared for, considering they have not taken care of what they were already given over the past year. They also made the claim that they would make sure that the new large dog area will be made suitable for dogs before they move forward with the bike park. I don't have faith in that either, based on how things have been handled so far. A few other parkgoers and I have formed a small committee and and started a Facebook group that already has over 100 members of dog park goers that live here in Phoenixville. And in hopes that we can organize further around all the reservoir dog park issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, I've turned on your microphone.
Hey, good evening. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So first of all, thank you guys for allowing the virtual option. Really helps some of our schedules. I also wanted to kind of add to what Troy was just talking about. Sorry, I live on Emmett Street. So I do live in the borough as well. Troy was talking about with the proposal for the mountain bike course. One of the other points that maybe wasn't talked about was, so, so I agree on the, the unused space. I estimate it is maybe 5,000 square meters, not 25,000 square, square feet, being up meters. So there is a little spot down towards the left where there's a bunch of trees that can't really get through, but otherwise the whole back area is, is used by the dogs. So regardless of that, you know, I would kind of wonder like if we'd want to do maybe a phased in approach, because as I kind of look in the dog park and the current bike park, you know, there's 26,000 square feet for the bike park. And then there is kind of that back area that maybe isn't as critical to the dog park, where I wonder if we could just, in the future, if it's really popular, just move the fence around and give the bike park a little more space instead of the dog park. Something else to consider. Part of my concern is that with the lower park is there, there's no trees there. They all were taken down in the last few years, so there's no shade. That's not easily replicated, and that's, that's one of the biggest issues today with the long Ford dog park, because it has no shade. So it's pretty much unusable in the summer. And the next closest dog park is unfortunately about a 30 minute drive. So either in Pottstown or Downingtown or Wayne, depending on what time of day it is. And, you know, finally, there's, there's probably a comment on, and this was commented on last time, about how the ground down there is not level. It sounded like there were not plans to level it. I would be concerned about that for some of our residents. I know at least two who attend the dog park frequently currently have a broken leg. That may make it very hard for them to access with something that has about a 3% to 5% slope on it, which sounded like it was something that was ideal for a mountain bike park, but would not be ideal for the humans at the dog park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, Mike Kajak, 10 North Main. Just wanted to say I'm in support of the modifications for the bike park. And in regard to Josh, the gentleman that was just speaking, there is a dog park less than two miles from downtown Phoenixville off Port Providence Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you, Lisa Hancock. I live on Anne Street. I've lived there since 2009. Moved there with my dog and my kids back then. And really, the dog park was such a huge part of our whole daily lives in the neighborhood and pretty much continues right now through my second dog. But it's an incredible social opportunity for people who live in the neighborhood and people who come from other places. But it's a real, it has been a real asset to the neighborhood. And I guess that's this, again, the shade makes it unique and wonderful compared to that other dog park in Oaks, which really people from Phoenixville would have to drive to. So this is a walkable amenity that I, I just would hate to see changed and really took me by surprise. So thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. With that, we'll close our first round of public participation. Moving on to section five of tonight's agenda, we do have our consent agenda. There are two items that we'll be pulling out of this. It's going to be C1 and E3, just for further discussion and due to one conflict of interest. So is there any other items any members of council would like to have further discussion on and pull out of our consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So move him. Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And with that, that will bring us to our communications and council participation. There are a few items I just wanted to make note of, a few key happenings and projects and accomplishments. First off, I, I did want to take a moment and thank the anonymous donor who provided the progressive flag that is currently flying over Borough Hall for Pride Month. As many have seen now, last week, we installed the long awaited Pride Walks along the 100 block of Bridge Street. This project was actually three years in the making, started in part by former Councilman Soto. So he's very glad to see these finally in place. But thanks to COVID and some supply backlogs, they finally got on track this spring. And this was actually a Borough Council project that was brought to us through our Borough, our Borough Beautification Advisory Commission and the LGBT Equality Alliance. So I'm just very pleased that we were able to get this through, get this approved and get this installed. And thank you to the BAC. Thank you for council's support on this project. It's the first one in Chester County and the only one. And thank you to the 40 plus volunteers who actually showed up and helped paint last Sunday. I couldn't be more proud of how this project actually turned out. With our consent agenda format, it's kind of streamlined a couple of the accomplishments that we have going on. So I did just want to make note that there are two new businesses opening soon on Bridge Street. With, by reviewing our minutes and other documents, by my count, I think we're at eight new businesses on Bridge Street and two new businesses on Main Street this year alone in the first six months. I think that's quite remarkable, considering the economic climate that we're going through. We have, in terms of project updates, we do have some exciting project updates. Finally, our, our T-Mobile funded, grant funded Bridge Street Ballard project will actually begin installation next weekend, thanks to our Public Works Department. So I just wanted to thank T-Mobile again for helping ensure the safety of our downtown street closures and our Public Works Department for installing them. And lastly, my last update for this month, just as some sort of, sort of breaking news. Earlier this afternoon, our very own Public Works Director, along with the assistants of our Police Department, our Fire Department, and our Streets Department, perfectly executed a daring technical rescue in a confined space. All eight ducklings have now been reunited with their mama. So I did just want to thank our staff and our departments for their, for noticing this and for taking care of this problem properly. So those are my updates for the month.
Thanks, Mr. Ewald. I just wanted to recognize that we've had three successful weekends of our open air or Phoenixville inside out. I want to thank Borough staff who've been really conscientious of the little happenings each weekend, making sure any little constructive feedback we have, we're acting on. We've had lots of great feedback from businesses and residents. There's been some traffic concerns that were easily addressed with some quick modifications. I did get one report from an establishment that I'm already working on the chief to address. So again, we have been thriving in these times. I also wanted to give a nice shout out to our new social media and PR. Megan is with us tonight. She's been at lots of events. And just if you've noticed the tone of our social media and just how informative and educational it's been, as well as fun, I really wanted to give a shout out to that. It's been really encouraging for me to see all that information being shared on social media for the public to see. I also wanted to thank both our Borough staff, our Streets Department, our Recreation Department, all of council and the Bianco family. We were able to dedicate Hartwood Park last weekend. It's a beautiful park. If you haven't seen it, it makes me smile every time I walk or drive past it. And we had a lovely evening to open up first Friday to dedicate the park in a very special way. Very personal to me, thank you for a successful comeback of Dogwood. There was a strong, small and mighty volunteer force. And if anybody wants to get involved next year, we welcome that. So thank you. Dogwood was back for the first time in two years, and I saw many friendly faces and old friends out there. So that was wonderful to have that back. It feels like it is officially now spring and summer since we had Dogwood. Citizens Advocacy, I recently met with one of their new executives. Just a reminder that that's a program that's been in our community for 40 years. If you would like to be an advocate or you know someone who needs an advocate, please reach out to Citizens Advocacy. And they have a very good social media and Facebook presence as well as a website, if you want to check that out. Other happenings that I've been dealing with as a council member, I just wanted to remind folks that we do have a Human Rights Commission, and that is a resource to all of our residents. There is information on our website about our Human Rights Commission. We haven't had to be very active, but just know that, you know, the mission and the purpose of that commission is to positively promote health, safety, and general welfare and interest by assuring equal human rights in the borough of Phoenixville. So that commission does work to eliminate any discrimination through citizen action, education, and enforcement. So certainly, if you have a concern, look for that information on our website. There is a form you can complete if you have a question or concern and utilize that tool as a way of seeking action and a positive approach. I also want to congratulate Ant Art. We now have a new Sarah, so Center for Emergency Resources at Ant Art. That includes, so it's an extension of the Code Blue Center that is held in the wintertime. It includes Code Red services, laundry and shower facilities during the day for those who are suffering from homelessness. But it also gives a platform to connect those, those people who are in need of resources with counselors and social workers that can then help them link with long-term resources. I wanted to thank Barnstone Art, in addition to the pride flags and the pride walk that Mr. Ewald spoke about. Barnstone created us a pride wheel that's been traveling around town. So a pinwheel is a symbol of childhood awareness and childhood abuse awareness. And they created a pride wheel just to commemorate and, and really recognize that the population within the LGBT community does need to recognize that. And we've been celebrating pride, but also recognizing the need within that community. So look for that. Take a selfie with it and thank Barnstone. And last but not least, our community did have some sad news yesterday. Unfortunately, Phoenixville took a big loss in losing Tammy Klatsbach yesterday. Her community work is bigger than many of us could even imagine. She did things big and small and certainly was a great light on our community. Some things I've learned, she did very quietly and she still would want to be quiet. She worked with Kiwanis Rotary, Seroptimists, and many, many others. And not only that, she was a mentor and a cheerleader for many in our community, a trailblazer of a female business owner that really is the essence of what Phoenixville and Phoenixville businesses are about, very generous to our community. So please keep her two sons, Josh and Andy, and your thoughts and prayers. April and Tara, their spouses, and her three granddaughters, as well as her husband Scott. The family did have services posted. And if someone does want to contribute a gift, it sounds like they'd look for contributions to Seroptimists and PACs. So keeping that family in, in your thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley.
Yes, Mr. President, if I could share a couple of updates on my end as well. First, I'd like to draw attention to our Phoenix Neo project. This groundbreaking initiative continues to move forward. The electrical and plumbing starts this week, bringing us one step closer to full operation. There was a successful progress meeting with all parties yesterday. And just recently, there was a spotlight article in Treatment Plant Operator Magazine, which within its spaces is kind of a big deal, and we're really proud about that. Other recent highlights, we've recently relocated the Fountain Inn Monument. The, this is the monument at the intersection of Nut and Bridge that used to sit directly in the middle of the road, which marks the furthest inland point reached by the British invasion of the northern colonies in September of 1777. This monument has been relocated to a place that's much more accessible to the community, just next to the Fountain Inn or Pat's Pizza, just on the side of the road there. I just wanted to give a shout out to the Rotary Club, who has been maintaining this monument and the decorations around it, and will continue to do so. Really appreciate that. Two more items. The, you may have noticed new informational kiosks are really recently redesigned kiosks in town. There are four of them. They look beautiful and provide information to the community. So make sure you make note of those. Another proud development. And then finally, our new fire station continues to progress. We're getting really, really close to opening it, and we have a tentative ribbon cutting date of August 20th. We'll confirm that and from that up as, as we get closer. But if you're looking to mark your calendars, that would be the date to mark them at for now. Really excited for what that will mean to the community and, and all the work and efforts that have gone into making it a reality. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all from me.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Kirk. Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things on a personal note, I just want to give a heads up. I will not be in attendance at next month's meeting because of a previous business commitment, so it's a little, little summer vacation for all of you. And also with regard to Dr. Sanic's previous question about the Complete Streets resolution, tonight I'll just read from, as a quick answer, read from the first paragraph of that resolution. Complete Streets describes a comprehensive integrated transportation network with infrastructure and design that allows safe and convenient travel along and across streets for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, persons with disabilities, motorists, movers of commercial goods, users and operators of public transportation, seniors, children, youth, and family. It is a vision document from Chester County. It is not a policy document. It is not a hard and fast rule. It's an idea. It's something to strive for as we go forward and consider new projects and reconstruction of streets, et cetera, things like that. So it is an advisory guideline at best, at it, at its most strict. Also, another sad note, I, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Usherina Gandhi, Nagandi. Usha, she's a, a constituent and North Ward resident. She was one of the original members of the Beautification Advisory Committee back in 2012 or 2013, I think it was. She immigrated from India at a, a young age, had two children, two sons, Vimal and Kevin, and, and we certainly want to send our thoughts and prayers to them. She went to school later in life, became a nurse, and then kept going to school and, and became a teacher and had a number of master's degrees. And she loved Phoenixville very much. And I can say many of us on the North Side loved her very much, and we will miss her. I'll miss her at seeing her at the polls on election day. So, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge the passing of Usha Nagandi. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Any other council updates tonight? With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for those who have joined us here in person and those joining us virtually. It has been a busy couple of weeks here in the borough of Phoenixville. A couple of things, just thank you so much to the LGBT Equality Alliance of Chester County for the incredible Pride Festival that we had this last weekend. It was wonderful to see all of the streets so filled. It was also an incredible opportunity for us to be visited by our Attorney General, Josh Shapiro. We also were visited by Chrissy, our Congresswoman, Chrissy Houlihan, and our State Representative Melissa Schusterman. So it was a really neat opportunity. They actually stayed for quite a while. We had over three hours. They were visiting different businesses and talking to the different vendors and people at the Pride Festival, as, as well as visiting our beautiful Rainbow Crosswalk. So it was exciting to see that. Congratulations to all of our graduates, to those who have been promoted from fifth grade to sixth grade, all of our eighth graders moving to high school, as well as our kindergartners moving into first grade. It was very exciting to spend the last week with you. Congratulations to our Lieutenant Joe Nemec. He has just graduated from the FBI Leadership Academy. The academy is really one of the foremost The academy is really one of the foremost kind of law enforcement programs in the world. They have over two hundred graduates in each class and they hail from police departments, not only in the United States, but countries throughout the world. We are very fortunate to actually have two graduates of the FBI Academy, one being of course Chief Marshall and now Lieutenant Joe Nemec. I would like to thank the Kiwanis Club for their incredible patriotic celebration. That happens annually, usually the Friday before Memorial Day. Again, a great opportunity for the students in our community to come together to celebrate. Alianza to Phoenixville did a wonderful town hall with Officer Jimenez, Chief Marshall, Lieutenant McIntyre and myself. It was a really great opportunity to meet other members of our community and have conversations about public safety, policing within the borough of Phoenixville. As Councilwoman Berkeley said, the Dogwood Festival, very exciting to have it come back again. So thank you to all those who were involved with that. A couple of other special shout outs. I wanted to congratulate Corporal Brown, Officer Brian and Officer Dobry. They received an award from the Chester County EMS Council for their incredible work during a pediatric rescue. The council described it as these officers allowed this young person to have a second chance at life. And so of course, our incredible officers every single day, working alongside all of our first responders here in Phoenixville, doing great work. Also, another shout out to Alianza to Phoenixville. I was able to speak at their leadership, Alianza's Leadership Academy and Support, which helps to encourage people within our community to be more involved in leadership and to find a place to kind of give back within the Phoenixville community. Upcoming events. On the fifteenth tomorrow, we've got a vegan dine around through Delaware Valley Veg. On the eighteenth is Dinner on Vert, which supports, it's a surprise green dinner. There are still tickets available if you go to dinneronvert.com. It's a surprise location. It's all vegan and it supports Ann's Heart as well as Delaware Valley Veg. On Saturday, the eighteenth also, eleven to five, there is a street art festival done in conjunction with the Phoenixville Firebird Festival. That's on the two hundred block, eleven to five. On the nineteenth, a very important celebration here in Phoenixville, and that is Juneteenth. And that is being done in conjunction with Diversity in Action, Black Light Projects, Communities That Cares and Orion Communities. And that's two to six P M. On Bridge Street. So another really important festival, of course, Juneteenth. Let's see. I do want to mark on everyone's calendar, August second, we have our National Night Out. This year it will be larger than ever and that's going to be up at our new rec center parking lot. We should have a lot of incredible activities. Chief Marshall has been working to secure a variety of fun activities and really a great opportunity for the community to come out and celebrate our first responders. I want to give a very special shout out to our Holy Ghost Church, the Senior Center and First Presbyterian Churches. These three locations have provided parking, their donations suggested. But they have really helped to encourage people to come into the community. They've used it as outreach programs. I will say that Holy Ghost Church this last week alone has parked over eight hundred cars. So it's incredible to see the impact that they're having on our community and helping to bring people to enjoy into our community. Also, this month and ongoing, we will be having Operation Chill being done in conjunction with the Phoenixville Police Department and seven eleven. Operation Chill is that we have officers have little coupons for free slushies. So there are young people out in our community doing good things. They can give them a cool coupon to get a free slushie. So be on the lookout, always do good things and you might get a slushie this time around. So thank you all so much. Of course, too, I just want to join with Councilman Kirchner and Councilwoman Berkeley and send our condolences to Rainey and Tammy. Both pillars in our community certainly may not physically be here, but their impact will always be felt within the Phoenix community. Thank you all so much and thank you for being here with us.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item eight. We have appointments and public resolutions. There are no appointments or public resolutions tonight, but we do have either actual or anticipated openings on both our HRC and TAC boards. So any members of the public who are interested in joining any boards or committees, please reach out to your councilperson and we can guide you through the application process. Moving on to new business, section nine, we have a Paradise Water Line, sorry, Paradise Street Waterline proposal as recommended by staff. Need a motion to in discussion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation regarding Paradise Street Waterline installation.
I'll second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. With that, Mr. Crack, if you want to give a little background on this project. It is timely and seems like a good proposal.
Is, this Steel Point project was evolving. We were looking at the water lines that were being proposed. There, there's water lines coming from Main Street. And then there's North Main Street and then there's water line that was anticipated to come from High Street off of right Mari Road and High Street Merge. And coming off of that, that's a, that's a pretty, pretty tough area, pretty hilly area. The, the trail is there and a lot of unique problems associated with it. So quite some time ago, well over a year ago, actually, we, we started talking with the folks at Steel Point, recognizing that we had the opportunity with the bridge, since they were going to be putting a gas line, Pico was going to be putting a gas line and attach it to the bridge coming down Paradise Street. Maybe we should look at the possibility of tying in a ten inch line from center, Center Street, come down Paradise Street. And, and provide a better loop, if you will, of, of water service and a lot easier to get that line in there. So over the last six or seven months, we've, we've been going back and forth. Pricing has been all over the place. Trying to find product, as many of you know, is in, in anything that you look for these days has been extraordinarily difficult. Thirty, forty, fifty weekly times and what have you. Finally, we, we were able to sit down with the folks at, at, at Steel Point and came up with a game plan to run the water line past the, the fire station out to center. As we did, some of you may recall, we did this up with the Recreation Center. We were looking to bring a water line up Anne Street. Realized that it was a, a better solution if we were to run a water line from the pump station down Fillmore and tie into the station. Well, this is somewhat similar, only instead of hundreds of feet, we're talking sixteen hundred and seventy feet. So working through the devil in the details, we looked at what the cost would have been for them, they being Steel Point to run their line from High Street down and what it would cost to run the line all the way out from Paradise Street out to center. And we found a middle ground where the borough, we, we weren't going to make the developer pay for it all because he didn't have a real reason to do that, but it would benefit us if we would put this project together. So what you have before you is a, a recommendation that we're going to split the cost of the pipe because our half of it would be the, the additional funds. And in essence, that's the, the crux of it. But I know Scott, you had something you wanted to say on it as well.
Sure. Basically, when a new development purchases EDU's equivalent dwelling units from the borough, it, it's to reimburse the borough for the installation of the sewer system and the water system. And this project had a significant number of EDU's because it's a, a large development with a lot of residences. So if a private developer were to put in a new system itself, it would be entitled to a reimbursement and recapture agreement wherein anyone else that connects to the new line would then have to pay the developer instead of basically for EDU's instead of the borough. The way that we think probably makes the most sense is instead of going through that process and then having to pass ordinances to figure out what zones the borough collects EDU's and what zones is, are under this potential recapture area. The cleaner way we think to do it is to offer them a reimbursement of certain of the EDU's they've paid for, for that development in the amount that they would be spending to put in this line. And then moving forward, we would continue as we always have that all EDU's in the future would be purchased from the borough.
Questions on the motion? There, there's a lot of information there, a lot of information in the packet.
So yes, just, just to follow up with Scott. So they've paid for all the, Steel Point has paid for all the EDU's that they were needed to pay for to build Steel Point. Is that, is that correct?
With the exception of the apartment complex, because we haven't gotten there yet, but the, as the homes have come online, yes.
Okay. So then we are going to be because of their contribution to this line, we're going to be refunding to them. Do I get that right?
Correct.
Okay. With certain, a certain number of EDU's and, and how will that be documented or will we have an agreement and the actual numbers be worked out with them or how's that done?
The numbers will be based on so as Gene mentioned, we are splitting the total project fifty fifty. So the fifty percent that the borough would otherwise be responsible for, that amount would be reimbursed by the number of EDU's necessary to make up that amount. And we would probably do a pretty simple agreement for that to document it.
And is this line, there are fifty percent, is that already called for in our budgets? Have we budgeted for it or is it newer?
It, it's not. And, and with the, in this case, it, there would be no budget issue because the EDU's that have come in, we will, we will be reimbursing those. So those are, it's not an actual line item that's in there as an operating expense. It's it comes in as an estimated dollar value based on the number of units we think that are coming in, in any given year. What we'll wind up doing is reimbursing those and then see where that lax fee lands.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm reading the memo here and it says that there may need to be a material cost adjustment once the price, once the pipe arrives and that we're thirty-five weeks out on this.
When I wrote the memo, that's where we were at. We have been working, Mr. Watson and I and people at Steel Point. We believe we can get these, this pipe in as early as late July or early August.
Okay. And then the last paragraph, an additional cost of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars, forty-three cents. Is that the amount that will be reimbursed or?
No, the, the, the amount is going to be reimbursed, I believe. I don't have it sitting in front of me.
So, so this is the additional cost?
There's two, there's two line items. One is twenty-eight thousand that was already incurred that will be reimbursing, which was, we required them to put in that, uh, an oversized line on the bridge. And so that's on us. We wanted, we took that line up in size. And so now that we have that ten inch, I believe it's ten inches going across the, the new bridge. That's what we're going to tie into at the fire station on out to, to center. So that that cost was always going to be there. And then the additional cost is what I've described in the, in the memo, which is, I think it's three hundred and eight thousand. So the total is going to be three thirty-six? I think I got that right.
Close enough, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's twenty-eight plus half of the bid price.
Right. The, the total cost of the project's well over a half million dollars.
Six hundred, eight thousand total cost. Okay.
That is a big upgrade for that neighborhood.
Thank you.
One other question, water. What about sewer? Or is, or is this?
We don't, we don't have that issue with the sewer side. And we, we, we wouldn't run a sewer line over or across the bridge. Or the creek. And unless it's already there, they're, they're already there.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Under section ten of tonight's agenda, we do have two ordinance or ordinances to, well, we have an ordinance and a resolution to consider. If we begin a discussion by a motion for the first ordinance.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter one, Administration and Government, part seven, pensions, retirement and social security, as continued from the March eighth, twenty twenty-two council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. This was continued from our March meeting. So with that, I believe there's some background that can be provided about the continuance and just so we're up to speed on this item.
Sure. The, uh, when, when we received the, I use this term loosely, the award from the arbitrator as, for the police contract. In there, the, the arbitrator wrote in drop, which is Deferred Retirement Option Plan, which is a plan that basically allows an officer at certain point in their career, meeting certain time values of, of service and age can go into a plan for up to five years. And then that, those funds are set aside and they continue to work, but they can know, they cannot, they can only work for the time that they commit to in, in the drop. So if it's two years, it's two years. If it's three, it's three, out to five, I believe it is. So what that does is that ensures stability and we're always looking for stability. And it creates a, an opportunity for us to plan moving forward. The unfortunate thing though, is that the arbitrator didn't give us the rules of the document itself. So two things had to happen. One is we have to incorporate in the ordinance under our pension, the fact that there is now a, a, a secondary component of the pension plan for the police department. And this is, this deferred Retirement Option Plan had to be established. The second part of that was the actual instrument that would be used to lay out what happens over that period of time, interest earned, how it's managed, application and, and all of that. Because the information came out of the arbitration, we, we were just moving ahead and then ultimately found out that one of the officers wanted to get into drop before we actually had the documents in place. So in March, we were moving ahead with those items, the, the ordinance itself, the draft of the agreement and, and the, the actual application process. When we hit an all stop, two days before the, the council meeting, as we were moving forward with the public hearing on the ordinance itself, the officers, the, the the police association, I keep wanting to say Fraternal Order of Police, the association didn't like the language or their attorney didn't like the language. And so we wound up sending it back to both our labor attorney and their attorney for review since March. We kept pushing it off one meeting after that. We pushed it off to April, then we want to push it off to May, and then we want to push it off to, to June. Finally, this past week, we got the actual document that was agreed to by both sides attorneys, which is the document that you now have in your packet, which sets in motion the opportunity tonight to go ahead and, and move forward with the actual ordinance itself. So we have the ordinance. We have the, the instrument that is used to affect the drop and then we have the application process. So it is, it is now ready to move the ordinance forward.
That is the Swiss watch we were looking for.
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions on this item? I know there's quite a bit to go through since it was continued since March. Mr. Kirchner?
I, I have one other question, one question. The ordinance mentions a trustee for the trust agreement. Borough Council shall appoint a police pan, plan trustee. Is that something we need to do tonight?
We, we don't need to do that as part of the, uh, tonight's effort, but we do, we need, we will need to make an appointment and my thoughts, my thoughts are, we already have a pension committee in place and I, I believe the pension committee could manage that that opportunity because we have two officers that are represented on there as well. We need to get there, but that, that seems to be the, the direction that we would like to go. That doesn't mean that we have to go there. But I don't know why we would create a tertiary entity unnecessarily. We are going to do this in-house. This is not something that we will be sending out to a plan management. The, the funds will be set aside and, and there's strict information as it relates to the interest that's earned. There's no less than and no more than regardless of what the, the markets do. So. There's no less than and no more than regardless of what the, the markets do, so.
Yeah, and that was my thinking that it would be in-house. I didn't think of the pension committee, but I did think of. Of you as borough manager or the HR director is.
I really do think we, Sam's the, uh, the two from the. The municipal side, the rest of the group could act as that, as that acting body.
Any other questions on this motion to adopt the ordinance amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And up next to start discussion, we'll need a motion for the resolution for one, two, three Main Street.
Yes, Mr. President, can I make a motion to adopt the resolution awarding the sale of certain borough owned real estate located at one, two, three Main Street via auction?
Second.
Much by Mr. White, second by Mr. Kirchner. For this one, I'd like a little background just to remind everybody of how this process was carried out, the reason of it and. And all the other pertinent details from our solicitor, just so everybody has a clear reminder.
Sure, a, as you all know, in April Borough Council authorized. Or adopted a resolution authorizing the sale of the former Civic Center. Via auction in accordance with the bid requirements of the Pennsylvania Borough Code. On June second, an auction was held and the highest bid was eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars by Michael K. Jack. As required by the auction bid documents, the highest acceptable bidder execute an agreement of sale reflecting that highest bid. And now, uh, the Pennsylvania Borough Code requires that the borough to complete the agreement of sale. Adopt a resolution, accepting that highest bid and authorizing the borough to enter into the agreement of sale and complete the conveyance of the property.
Any questions on the motion due for this resolution for the sale of the Civic Center? Very good. All those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. And with that, we do have a pair of public hearings tonight. So if we can have a motion to begin.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, we want to go into recess into a public hearing to, right? To adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty two Phoenixville Comprehensive Plan Update, continued from May tenth.
We have a motion from Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, so as you know, we opened this hearing for consideration of the Borough Comprehensive Plan Update last month. At the Borough Council Meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty two. As noted at the time, we were unable to verify that we had shared the proposed comprehensive plan with the Regional Planning Committee. Now, the borough has since ensured that we shared the comprehensive plan with the Regional Planning Committee and are prepared to move forward tonight. As required by Article three of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. In addition to the Regional Planning Committee, the draft comprehensive plan was shared with the Borough Planning Commission, Chester County Planning Commission. Phoenixville Area School District, Schuylkill Township, East Pikeland Township and Upper Providence Township, Montgomery County. In addition, the Comprehensive Plan Update was an agenda item in the Borough Council's public meeting held on April twelfth, twenty twenty two. We also entertained the public com- comment of a number of community members at last month's portion of the hearing. The continued purpose of this hearing is the formal consideration of the Comprehensive Plan Update, including further pub- public participation. I would advise the public, however, that comments made last month are already a part of our record and there's no need to restate. Or summarize the comments made last month. Before I get started, I need to identify a number of exhibits, exhibits included as a part of this hearing. Exhibit B one is the proposed Comprehensive Plan Update consisting of, I believe, two hundred and three pages. Exhibit B two, proof of publication from the Mercury verifying that notice of the draft Comprehensive Plan. Was available for review by the public and was advertised on February ninth, twenty twenty two and February twenty third, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B three, cover letter sharing the draft Comprehensive Plan with all contiguous municipalities, the Phoenixville Area School District. And Chester County Planning Commission sent by the Borough Manager on February seventh, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B four, minutes of the March tenth, twenty twenty two, Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission Meeting. Exhibit B five, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated April one, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B six, proof of publication of the public notice from the Mercury verifying that the hearing was advertised on April twenty fifth. Twenty twenty two and May second, twenty twenty two. Exhibit B seven, public notice for this Comprehensive Plan Update Hearing. Exhibit B eight, the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee Review Letter dated May twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. And I will move those exhibits into the record. I would note, because the hearing was advertised for last month and continued. On the record of the hearing, it was not required to be re-advertised for tonight. With that, if there's any questions or discussion, I'm open up the Borough Council.
It is a lengthy two hundred and four page document. Is there any questions from council regarding? The motion to, to adopt the resolution, the document itself? Or any of the processes?
I, I don't have any questions. I'll just say that I support it. I read through it thoroughly and, and particular, I think the growing section of it. Which talks about how we have to manage housing in a responsible way, particularly around sustainable and affordable housing. It's something that we really need to pay attention to and, you know, take a look at how we can use that guidance to adjust our ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, if I may. The, um, the Regional Planning Committee did send a review letter regarding the Comprehensive Plan. And recommended a number of revisions that, um, one of which is that the. Comprehensive Plan Update should be revised to include all proposed regional trails and parks. Consistent with the Regional Planning Committee's Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan. Also, there's some confusion in the plan with regard to the Northern Relief Route. And, um, this, this was a point I, I raised at the Regional Planning Committee. And there, the PRPC CP's recommendation is that the plan. Should be revised to clarify the status of the Northern Relief Route and amended to include the Schuylkill Freedom Trail. Again, that's consistent with the PRC CP Comprehensive Plan and. Yeah, those, tho- those are comments from the Regional Planning Committee. I, I had a, a few additional comments on my own. One is that I, I have a, a real concern with the map in here. I, I have it on as page seventy five, but it's, it's an unnumbered page in the document. That it, it paints. The borough with a broad brush stroke called infill residential. And I know, I know these are just. Labels at this point, but I don't want anyone who lives in Winding River or Ledges or Riverwalk. Or all the planned residential developments that we've had in this community since after World War Two. You know, that includes Caribou Village, which was built about forty years ago. Overlook Park, which I don't know if anyone calls it that anymore, but it's east of Star Street. That's, that's a subdivision. There are no infill lots in any of these subdivisions. There are no infill lots in West Ridge. Or North Ridge or Canes Creek, Quail Crossing, the townhouses of French Creek. There, there are infill lots in the older part of the borough on the grid streets, but not. Not in those areas and I, and I have a real concern with using that kind of nomenclature to, to describe. These areas. I, I have an issue with the idea of accessory dwelling units and that's because I, I. I, I've been around for a long time and I've seen what garage apartments can do. When someone wants to build one in a neighborhood. And the, the angst that can cause for the zoning board. And, and the neighborhood map, just it, it uses names. It calls the West End West Town, for example. I think that's the most egregious one. But, um, you know, it, there, there's no historical reference in what these neighborhoods are called. In the, in the neighborhood map and, and I know. I, I, I know this was done at a difficult time and trying to get input on this is. And it hasn't been easy in the age of COVID, certainly, but I, I, I do have a number of concerns that. I, I think need to be addressed along with the comments from the, the Regional Planning Committee.
If, if I might, Mr. Kirchner, a couple of things. One, we did update the map. For the trails, the Freedom Trail and, and that has been included. That map has been updated and, and included in, in, in the version. As it relates to the Northern Relief Route. Borough Council has not made a formal decision on the land that's. Currently still identified as a right of way area. So while we may have turned back grant funding, council itself has not. Said there is no connection between. Fillmore Street and Township Line Road. So I think the Northern Relief Route that's identified in there is, is the correct nomenclature. We still need to work our way through that, but again, this is a planning document. It's not a hardcore document. As it relates to the future land use. The maps that are used here are using the official map that we have in zoning. And so those districts. Residential infill and what have you, it's not appropriate for the, uh, the comp plan to change the naming of those. They have to use what's currently in existence. However, once we leave this document, this document is approved. Staff is already working with, uh, the funding agencies to get funding to go right into zoning. The zoning is where we are going to be able to really address those things that you have as concerns. As it relates to what is infill, what is? The dwelling unit expansions, affordable, how, all of those things are going to be more or less addressed in the, in the zoning. That's the meat and potatoes. They, the, the, the comp plan can't just arbitrarily change the current official map. And so that's why you have this juxtaposition of what it's showing here. We totally understand what you're saying. But we have to show it as it is today. And then when we go into zoning, that's where council is going to say, maybe we don't want. Presidential infill as a nomenclature. Maybe we want R one, which is whatever that might be, R two and go. A little bit backwards in time, as you know, that's what we had. We had one, two, three and four. And maybe some of these other terms are, are changed as well. So I, I hope I've been able to convey that this is not the, the document that. Will do that. I think this is just reflective of what's in existence today.
I, I, I completely understand what this document is. It's a roadmap. It's not. It, it's not the, it's not the journey itself. It, it, it's just that. You know, my, my concern is that. It, as a, as a roadmap, if it says infill, someone could get the idea that that's where we want to go. And, um, you know, I, 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 I don't believe that Winding River and, and Ledges are infill. Residential at this point. I know where my neighborhood is, that's infill, but, uh. You know, I, I know. Fillmore Village, for example, I, I believe that's mixed use. So, um, and that's, what that's shown is infill residential on this map. So. So that's, I, I mean, that, that, that's my concern. With that, I, I don't want someone to get the idea down the road that. You know, it, it's okay to build infill out in Winding River because, but there's no police to put it, for one. But that's, you know, that, that's, that's a concern that, that I have and. You know, that's, it's going to stay out there.
Any other questions from council on the motion to adopt this, uh, resolution? A public comment, sorry. Before we jump the gun here, there, this is time for public comment on the adoption of the comp plan. As we mentioned before, any members of the public wishing to make public comment about the adoption of the. Regional company, sorry, the Phoenixville Comprehensive Plan Update. Please step to the podium and provide your name and address on the sheet provided. Any members of the public joining us virtually? Please raise your hand digitally and staff will select, unmute and announce you. Okay, seeing no public particip- If you have a comment about the Comprehensive Plan Update, that's where we're at right now. That's what we just called for, yes. Yes, right now. Right now. Yep, come on up.
Good evening. I'd have to concur with Councilman Kirchner. I think there's some areas that need to be better defined and I'm still. A little bit of regarding. The, the complete streets thing, the, uh, you're saying that's not.
Complete Streets will be later in the agenda.
Yeah. If it's, if it's not a policy document.
So Complete Streets will be later in the agenda? This is just about the Comprehensive Plan.
Complete Streets is in the comprehensive, this new comprehensive plan. Is that true? Am I misinterpreting?
You can make your statement.
Well, I'm trying to get things clarified. Mr. E. Walt, as to how this fits into putting that out there and how it. If you're including it into this motion and approving it, then is. Is it then become part of? Saldo or something that you incorporate later on or part of zoning? I'm not sure I follow why. That's a separate motion from the entire document of the Comprehensive Plan. I, I guess that's my question. And I would hope that be answered tonight. Isn't that the idea of a public hearing that you ask a question, get an answer? No, just make a comment?
If you're asking specifically about item E three, which was the, uh, adopting the Chester County Complete Streets Policy, that, that will be discussed under Policy Committee Updates. Which is section thirteen C. But if you're asking a question about the, the Comprehensive Plan and Complete Streets, I'm just trying to better understand the question.
I would say yes. I don't, I don't know how to answer that question. Can you repeat your question?
So, so you had mentioned during the first public participation that you had questions about. Item E three, which is the Chester County Complete Streets Policy Resolution. That will be discussed under section thirteen C tonight, later in the agenda. As we pulled that out of the consent agenda and we will be discussing that. Uh, right now, we're just discussing the. This is the public comment for the Phoenixville Comprehensive Plan Update. These are two separate items. Let's grab, do you have a?
Well, I, I think, I think some things.
Let me, let me just, okay, so in the, in the Comprehensive Plan, there are objectives. And there's a list of those objectives. Those objectives were a hand in glove dialogue. Because I not only was part of the comp plan, but I was also on the Advisory Committee for the Complete Streets. And so we, we took a look at. Not getting into great detail in the comp plan, but just recognizing that there are things that need to be addressed in. The Comprehensive Plan, so that when we're looking at pedestrian accessibility, there's a statement in there, there's an objective that says that we want to, we want to do the right thing. We don't have what the right thing is per se in the comp plan. The policy document that was created by Chester County was a document. To help seventy two municipalities that are going to individually do their own comp plans. To have a guiding instrument to do these things, so those are objectives, they're not hard and fast. Uh these are not ordinances, these are just focus and direction so that when we apply for grants, we can say. We meet in the comp plan, the objective A two two. Improve the pedestrian accessibility to allow people to walk freely through the through parks and amenities and through open space, through local destinations. So these are, these are all bits and pieces, these are not meant to be. Uh again, this is a, as Mr. Kurtner said, this is a roadmap, this is not hard and fast. The documents from the county are not hard and fast, but they're more. Aligned with seventy two municipalities trying to figure out how to do transportation moving forward. You I I I hear you trying to box it into somewhat of an ordinance or subdivision land development, and that's not what this is.
Uh I'm not trying to box anything, I'm just trying to understand, I I appreciate you trying to explain that and trying to understand. What level, you're saying it's just a reference thing basically within the. The the Comprehensive Plan or or what you're going to adopt tonight and and then you build from there.
So Complete Streets is another way to say safe streets, but not just safe for traffic, safe for pedestrians, safe for cyclists, safe. A complete. Safety zone for the street, that's why it's called Complete Streets. The Comprehensive Plan just says, basically, we want to make sure our streets are safe, we want to have complete streets. We then look towards the Chester County policy. To come up with some guidance of how to make our streets safe, how how to. Further pursue that goal of complete streets, it's why there's two separate documents.
Well, it it's just, everybody, hopefully our streets are safe now, right? Does that mean that the streets are not safe now?
I I think there are long term studies across the nation that while. Safety standards for vehicles have been studied and planned for for a long time. A a lot of pedestrians and cyclists and alternative modes of transportation haven't been considered as much as we would have liked them to have been.
Yeah. So what you're going to discuss later on under item five. Uh Roman numeral five. Three, E three. Is just something to refer back to when you write an ordinance, is that what you're saying? That that's all it is? Policy document. Now. I would, then I would just say, I would hope that whoever writes the final. What would it be, the advisory document or whatever it's going to be. Wouldn't try to put the entire borough into. One one thought, one, I know Chester County's come out with this or whoever's come out with it, I don't know who writes it. But uh. Some areas in the borough vastly different than others. And shouldn't have to be shoehorned into something else that. Maybe doesn't work for that area. That that's my comment. And.
Thank you.
I mean, it's one of the uniqueness of Phoenixville, you do have some areas that are a little bit rural. And you have a downtown and you have that and but. Anyway, that's about. I'm not sure I understand it yet, but that's my comment, so I thank you and uh for uh attempting to answer that. And I I'm actually not in favor of this Complete Streets, it sucks up a lot of territory. And I'm not sure you gain a whole lot that it couldn't be done in other ways. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, with that, we'll close the public comment portion, any further questions or comment from council?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Seven zero. And I would now entertain a motion uh on the Comprehensive Plan.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty two Phoenixville Comprehensive Plan Update, continued from the May tenth twenty twenty two meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carries six one.
I'll make a motion to open a public recess to a public hearing to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty two subdivision and land development, part four. Design standards, section twenty two four seventeen point seven uh electric vehicle parking.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh so. This hearing is for the consideration of an amendment to chapter twenty two of the Borough's Ordinances, which is the Borough Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, also known by its acronym SALDO. Um so if I accidentally call it SALDO, I apologize. And this ordinance amendment uh is to enact certain updates to electric vehicle provisions in the subdivision and land development ordinance. Since the subdivision and land development ordinance is regulated by Article five of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. We are required to hold a hearing this evening to consider these electric vehicle updates. As required by the MPC, the draft electric electric vehicle SALDO Amendment was shared with the Borough Planning Commission, Chester County Planning Commission. And Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. The proposed electric vehicle SALDO Amendment is intended to update the design standards for parking lots in the borough. To require that most new land developments provide electrical systems that can support level two electrical electric vehicle charging stations. And residential and non-residential new developments to install at least level two electrical charging stations for a certain minimum percentage of their provided parking spaces. Public notice of tonight's hearing was advertised on May thirtieth twenty twenty two and June sixth twenty twenty two. In the Pottstown Mercury and provided on the Borough website. In addition, a copy of the electric vehicle SALDO Amendment. Was. Provided for review at the Borough offices. The continued purpose of this hearing is a formal consideration of this electrical vehicle ordinance. And before we start, I need to identify a number of exhibits included as a part of this hearing. Exhibit B one is a proposed electric vehicle subdivision and land development ordinance amendment. Exhibit B two will be the proof of publication of the public notice from the Mercury verifying that the hearing was advertised on May twenty fifth twenty twenty two and June sixth twenty twenty two. That exhibit is not yet available, um it comes with our invoice, which we have not received yet. Exhibit B three are cover letters sharing the proposed ordinance with the Chester County Law Library and Pottstown Mercury. Sent by the Borough Manager on May twenty fourth twenty twenty two. Exhibit B four, minutes of the May twelfth twenty twenty two, Phoenixville Borough Planning Commission Meeting. Exhibit B five, the Borough Planning Commission Action Memorandum dated May thirteenth twenty twenty two. Exhibit B six, review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission dated May eighteen twenty twenty two. Exhibit B seven, review letter from the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee dated May twenty fifth twenty twenty two. And exhibit B eight, public notice for this hearing. I would move these exhibits into the record and. Let's start and ask if there's any public comment from the audience that's here in person. Seeing none, is there any on Zoom? Seeing none, I would turn it over to Borough Council for any questions or comments.
I would just say it was a, you know, a pleasure working with our um. Our, you know, we have a couple of members of the public that work with us through the Policy Committee and coming up with this uh policy amendment, I think is a great step forward. Uh as our, you know, for our SALDO.
Yeah, having participated in the Policy Committee meeting, I feel very confident in this.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing and resume the public meeting.
So moved?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I would now.
With that, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty two subdivision and land development, part four design standards, section twenty two dash four seventeen point seven electric vehicle parking.
I'd be happy to second.
Do we have to close the meeting first? Okay, we did, okay, just want to make sure, okay, so we have a motion by Miss Burkes and by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion for the adoption of this ordinance amendment. I believe we're the second in the region to adopt this, if not the first, so this is um another one where where um we're leading the edge on. On EVs, so with that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, thank you for that, everybody, uh with that, we'll move on to section twelve, reports of committees, boards and commissions, uh Mr. Moore with Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh only one uh um piece of business on us from the previous meeting. And that is, I'd like to make a motion to adopt um the side development program called two eleven High Street. As approved six zero by the Planning Commission, this is a. Uh posed consolidation of five existing parcels on the construction of a multifamily residential building with eight. One bedroom apartments and associated site improvements, um only one. A waiver was requested to not provide environmental impact analysis and that's makes sense because it's a completely built. Uh set of lots anyway, so there's no real environmental impact.
Second. My motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. I will just know for the record that the applicant is here for any specific questions. I do believe our solicitor has some background on this uh or manager on this project as needed.
Sure, Mr. Moore did a good job, uh took a lot of the background I was I was going to mention, uh but I I would add that the resultant tract. Uh will will share a rear parking lot uh with the neighboring parcel, which is also owned by the applicant, which is J and M Properties. And one of the conditions of approval is that a cross access uh and parking easement will be executed. Between the resultant tract and the neighboring tract, uh so that there are no. Parking issues in the future on that shared lot.
Any questions from council on the motion, Mr. Moore?
I just note that there was a, there was a um plan, a parking study conducted, so a parking analysis, and that was included in the packet and. It lays out the case that the it uh the plan will not uh increase. Uh parking demand, or the parking demand will be fully covered for the new building.
Any other questions, council or for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Nice to see more development there on High Street there.
Absolutely. Uh for the Historical Architectural Review Board, Ms. Tugendis is not here with us tonight, there were two items in our consent agenda. Uh or sorry, three items in our consent agenda, um two new businesses and one modification. With that, we'll move on to Regional Planning Committee with Mr. Kurtner.
Not much to report, Mr. President, the uh our our meeting last month consisted of the. The the Comprehensive Plan Review, which we've already gone through, the uh review of the. Um ordinance for the electrical ve- electric vehicles, which we've already approved and the um. The the uh what is it, Smart Streets? Resolution that we have coming up, so we're covering it all here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, just like to. Note that the Planning Commission meeting normally held for June, it has been canceled, there's no current business, so the one that would have been held uh this Thursday. Or, oh, actually, last Thursday. Um was canceled, so uh I'm not aware of whether we have one for July yet or not.
Very good, thank you. Again, Ms. Tugendis is not here tonight, so for Rec Board, uh she did ask that I announce that um. The all scheduled events are uh all scheduled and upcoming events and programs are posted on online at phoenixville.org. And um I know our social media has been doing a great job of promoting all the uh events as well. Uh so that with that, we'll go to BAC with Ms. Webb.
There is an opening on the BAC Committee, so if anyone's interesting in applying to be part of that committee, I believe the details are on the Borough website or will be. If they're not already, um and it's the most fun committee because it's where you make people smile, so it's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Uh Ms. Berkeley with TAC.
We also have two vacancies, so I would strongly encourage anyone interested to reach out to myself, Tac, or look for the information on the Borough website. I would also encourage everyone um to look out for a magazine or an article in the Borough Magazine by longstanding Tac member Paul Cutso. Cutso, uh it's a really good overview of the steps we've taken to take a responsible approach to our comprehensive tree plan. Why we're doing plantings, how we're making decisions about bringing trees down, we never want to take trees down, you know, without reasonable cause or safety issues. Our arborist is reviewing that, um there's been a little bit of urban legend that we're just taking down trees because we have a. Contract with somebody and that is not the case, we do have a contract, um but we have reassessed. What why trees are going down, what the list is, had I've had the arborist and the Tac Committee review that. We're also happy to report that we have seventy new trees in the borough from our spring planting. Um and if you are interested in volunteering for some of the watering of that, reach out to Tac, Mary Foot monitors that, she's one of our longstanding Tac. Members that monitors the um volunteer opportunities. The arborist did review the tree inspection list and he does rank um anything that does need attention by urgent, high priority, low priority. So that once his review is done, things are ranked in that way, and then we are getting them done as quickly as possible. Um the new trees, the seventy new trees I just mentioned are going to be tagged, so they'll be going into the electronic system. Um next month, we will continue to discuss budget because we're already getting ready for fall planting. Um and then the twenty twenty two and the twenty twenty three tree list has been reviewed by the arborist and Tac, so. We're not just taking down trees without talking to the proper authorities, there's been determinations as to why and. You know, rationale for that, that's very specific. Again, if you are interested, please apply for the two vacancies and our next meeting is. July, I almost said January, oh my goodness, July eleventh.
Okay, thank you, and moving right into council action referred from council committees, Ms. Berkeley with police personnel, public safety.
So if you apply for any of these vacancies we just talked about, it will be reviewed in our next police and personnel, public safety. Meeting will invite you to come and chat with us about the role that you're seeking. Um and because of the Fourth of July holiday, we're actually going to be meeting on Tuesday the fifth.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to Parks and Rec Committee with Mr. Moore, we have the one item that we pulled from our consent agenda, which is the approval of motion to approve the Firebird Festival TCE application, Mr. Moore.
Uh I'd like to make a motion to approve the temporary community event application for the Firebird Festival, Veterans Park, Saturday, December tenth twenty twenty two, five PM to. Ten PM, street closure, including Marley Road between Saint Mary's and Northridge Drive. From twelve PM till eleven eleven PM that day, uh conditioned upon adherence to the additional conditions approved by Borough Council and so forth.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Webb, questions on the motion for the approval of Firebird Festival, Mr. Kirk. Questions on the motion for the approval of Firebird Festival, Mr. Kirchner?
Just for clarification, those additional conditions include the memo from the Borough manager dated March twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions on the motion for the application for the TCE of Firebird? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries, sorry. And we have one abstention, so it is six-zero-one. Motion, the Firebird has been approved. Any other updates from Parks and Rec Committee, Mr. Moore?
No, nothing current. The, I'll just speak to the public comment. I'm not sure that, because it's not a really committee meeting, but the decision to shift the mountain bike and the dog park issue came directly to the, to council last month versus going through Parks and Recreation Committee. And I, a little, I think maybe we might have been a little bit precipitant. I probably should have asked to maybe have it come back to committee. So I'd like to ask staff and Rec Department to consider what we can do to respond to some of these concerns that were raised about. Because we've, we've approved it, and as I understand it, the, the bike, the mountain bike club is supposed to be proceeding with, with the work to do the change. So I don't know whether there's anything we can do in terms of responding to some of these concerns.
So, so it was moved from directly through, but that was my direction and based on the applicants needing to make a deadline for the, the actual company that installs it. So I do believe in the next three to four weeks, they'll begin construction and have this largely resolve some of the issues that were raised in terms of repairing the large dog park, the new large dog park, before any action will be taken to begin their improvements for the mountain bike area. Sure, and as Ms. Kirchner stated, we will update the website to, to better reflect the layout and timeline. So. Anything else out of Parks and Rec tonight?
If I may follow that up, Mr. President, my, my motion last month to approve this, this swap with the mountain bike and the dog park stated that the, we approved the staff to execute a memorandum of understanding with the mountain bike group. And I guess has that memory, MOA been executed at this point?
So I believe that MOU is currently in, well.
What, we're, I've reviewed a draft and marked it up significantly and it's being negotiated currently.
So I think we expect that to be wrapped up in the next week, as soon as you hear back.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments out of Parks and Rec tonight?
Nothing further.
So the other TCE came in under the consent agenda. Yep. Okay, so we'll move on to Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability Committee. Sorry, missed one there. Move on to Item C. We'll go in order this time. Mr. Kirchner with Policy Committee.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. President, I'll, I'll make a motion that Council approve the, the resolution adopting complete streets as noted in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Since this one was, I mean, I think it's been well discussed at this point, but this was one that I just felt could come out of consent agenda in case there was further discussion needed from anybody on Council, so. Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else out of Policy Committee tonight, Mr. Kirchner?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will now move on to Item D, going alphabetically tonight. Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability Committee, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ewald. Lots going on, but no action to report at this time. Our next meeting is on the twenty-first, one week from tonight, at seven PM.
Great, thank you. And all items for Finance Committee were handled by Ms. Dugan, or were handled for Ms. Dugan in the consent agenda. So nothing to report out for Finance Committee tonight. With that, that will take us to our second and final round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make any comment that are here tonight in the room, please step to the podium, provide your name and address on the sign-in sheets that are below the microphone. Any members of the public who are joining us virtually via Zoom, we ask that you raise your hand, and our staff will, once we've cycled through the members who are joining us in the room, we'll go through our members of the public who are joining us via Zoom. As a reminder, we do limit public participation to one time per period. So that was just a clarification from the earlier one, so, yes.
Good, good evening. My name's Carlo Ferry. I represent More Kids on Bikes with my fellow board members behind us. We just wanted to clarify and give you an update on how the progress of the bike park is coming along. And also clarify some comments that were made tonight. So looking back on the progress that we've been, if you look at the timeline, More Kids on Bikes started back in two thousand and twenty with the idea of getting more kids on bikes and getting more kids involved in the Phoenix on Inferno mountain bike team. In two thousand and twenty-one, we were faced with a challenge of sharing the park with the disc golfers, and the solution was really just to kind, to develop a contained space for the, for the mountain bike team, so we could practice in a safe area. So approaching Parks and Recs, they had, they had advised us to have the, the current dog space area, which was not being utilized for us to have as a, as a space to practice during the season. So we, with a number of our committee members, we rounded up a lot of volunteer hours to clean up that space. Trees were, were taken down because of disease or dangerous safety issues by Parks and Recs, and we beautified the space in order to be used for the team during the season in two thousand and twenty-one. At the end of two thousand and twenty-one season, we kind of rehashed on how the season went and how to get more involved in the community. The idea of coming up with, bringing a bike park to Phoenixville was born. We approached Parks and Recs in January of two thousand and twenty-two to discuss the idea of moving forward with that idea. We were approved to be on the council meeting in February for approval of that, the, the original bike park space in February. From that point forward, it was just a windfall of just opportunities where people were coming to us and just wanting to donate money because of the popularity of the idea of bringing this to, to Phoenixville. We, at the end of March, as Mr. Senico had mentioned last month, we raised enough money where we felt as if we could succeed in building that bike park, the original plan. And so with the idea of the popularity, we wanted to bring that vision and make it bigger and better because that's what people are asking for. So we were given the opportunity in May to present the idea of expanding the bike park with the idea of obviously switching that with the current large dog park area right now. We were approved in, in May with the idea of having an MOU drafted, which we are in the process of reviewing right now. We'll get back to the comments on it. But there are some provisions in there we talked about as far as the idea is that we would not, we would collaborate with the dog park folks in order to make sure that the dog park would be available for, for use. So we're in the process of cleaning up the, the space as part of the MOU to make it usable for the, for the dog, dog park users. Our idea is that we want to make sure that everyone is utilizing this space in a collaborative way, disc golfers, mountain bikers, and, and the, and the, and the dog park community. So we're in the process of cleaning up the space. The fencing area that was, was damaged was done by storms back in December. So that's something that we had agreed to fix that, to make it usable for the dog park users and clean up some, some debris over there. So we're in the process of doing that. As far as the construction is concerned, since we were approved for the space in May, we've, Mr. Senico had mentioned that we were seventy-two percent of the way there. As of this point, we feel like we're, we're very close to meeting our goals of the new space right now for fundraising, which is unbelievable. Since, since May, we were at First Friday back in early June with our Team Ten. We were promoting the idea of the bike park. Many of us, many folks in the community were coming up to us, asking a lot of questions, very, very enthusiastic with the idea of having this bike park. So right now, we feel like we're in a great position. The idea is with the existing large, large dog park area, we are in the process of cleaning up the debris that's in the back part of the, of the dog park area. We were looking into volunteers, contractor to come in to clean up that space right now to make it usable for when the, when the contractor comes and use to build that, that space. So as of right now, we feel as if that our goal is to make sure that we are working with the community because the bike park is something that is free access to anyone, all abilities, kids up to adults, and it's free to use. And I think that's a great opportunity for the community to embrace that. And that's, that's our goal, to get more kids, more adults, more anyone on bikes. So we, we are very happy to work, collaborate with, with the dog park folks to make this work for both of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I just have a question. Is, is the dog park and the bike park going to both be there? Is that, is that how this is working out? So it's a matter of working that out.
Yes, there, there will be, still remain two dog parks and the mountain bike skills park.
And the, the other question I had, I'm not gonna leave it go. It's getting late, but maybe, getting back to this complete streets things, you say Borough policy. What do you mean by policy?
Dr. Sanic, Borough Council President was nice enough to answer your first question, but this is a public comment period.
Just leave it. So you're not gonna answer that. Okay, good enough. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Have any members on Zoom?
Kristen, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you so much. Um, my name, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. I'm Kristen Guzan. I live over on Rapsdam Road in East Pippin Township. And I just, I guess, would like to learn more about this collaboration between the mountain bikers and the dog park people because we just found out about the mountain bikers taking over the dog park, and there's like a Facebook page that has been created in response to it. And I know a lot of people are upset about this because there's not many places that dogs can go off-leash in the area. But there are a lot of trails where bikes can go all through Phoenixville and around Phoenixville. So we're a little bit upset that they're coming out for mercy out of the dog park. So we would just like to be taken into consideration with the new plans with the mountain bikers. I guess that's, thank you.
Any other comment from either Zoom or in the room tonight?
I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we'll conclude the second and final round of public participation tonight. Any updates or any other communication or council participation based on tonight's discussions?
Mr. President, I think you already did this, but just to be very clear, the, and the plan that was approved in last council meeting, there's, we're not doing away with the dog park. The dog park, the bike skills, and the disc golf course, along with just enjoying Reservoir Park, is all going to be happening happily together. We're just working out the specifics and logistics of getting the work done and all of that. So there will still remain two dog parks. There will still be a skills park. There will still be a disc golf course. There will still be lots of fun action up there. It's also where our new community center or rec center is, so lots more parking, lots more action. So yes, everyone's going to have to share parking, but I think we can all coexist very well.
I also just wanted to note too that there is another dog park that's about to be usable right along the trail, within walking distance of the, the dog park in Reservoir Park. So I just ran by it, I just ran by it the other day, and it looks like, you know, all it needs is grass.
Just for clarification, that, that it, in the plans, it's being offered for dedication, but we have not taken dedication of that. We did note that the way it's set up right now, there's no interlock. It's two separate, you can see there's a small and there's a large dog. We have talked to the developer that before we would even consider taking dedication of that, if council so desires, that they should, even if we don't, they should put in an interlock so that the dogs can go in and then go into each side. So we, we have communicated with them what we think they should do in order to, to get council to consider dedication.
Any other council participation? Okay. With that, staff reports are in your packets for Items A through G under Item sixteen. We do have a need for executive session tonight, which we will be having a voting session for return. We expect to come back for voting regarding real estate litigation. Do we have a motion?
Motion to recess to executive session?
Second.
With that, at nine oh six, we're going to recess into executive session, and we'll be back for an anticipated vote at some point. Good evening. We are now, we're returning from executive session at nine twenty-one. What is Council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add an item regarding a settlement agreement in the matter of the Odessa appeal.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley to add an item to the agenda for voting. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Kirchner?
Mr. President, I make a motion that Council authorize the solicitor to execute a settlement agreement regarding the matter of the Odessa appeal.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now adjourning into executive session. We will not be returning, so good night. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, and thank you.